And ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey? Councilmember McGarvey? We will come back.
Thought we had everybody.
I can see his name. I'll come back to him. Uh, councilmember Terry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Here.
Mayor Sander?
Here.
And we're waiting on councilmember McGarvey. He's logged in.
Okay, Stacy, if you'd go ahead with the Metro Cable TV announcement, please.
Sure. This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air, excuse me, today's meeting will air on Thursday, November 5th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, November 8th at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, uh, we are gonna do the pledge of allegiance. And I think I see, is that my neighbor Helen in the room?
No.
No?
No.
Are you declining an opportunity to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I am.
Oh, my goodness. All right, let's see, I don't, uh, who else do I see in the room? Cyrus, you're in the room. I think you're gonna be up.
Okay.
So Linda has a flag ready for presentation here. Cyrus, if you would lead us in the pledge. And then we have Dan DeShong, a River City Christian, ready to lead us in invocation, I think, after that. So go ahead, Cyrus. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in pleasure. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, invisible, liberty and justice for all. And Dan, if you would lead us in an invocation?
I'd be happy to. Peace by your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance of our blessings. We praise you for our wonderful city and especially our leadership. We pray that the decisions of this council will honor you and bring peace and calm to our citizenry. We thank you for the growth of our city. Tomorrow marks a new day in the election process of our city, our county, our state, and our nation. We ask for peace and understanding, no matter the outcome. Heavenly Father, help us to love you with all of our hearts, soul, mind, and strength, and to love one another. We pray this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dan. That was great. I like your poster in the background there and the flag. All right, let's see here. Um, we are going on to presentations, item number five. And the first one is a proclamation. Shauna Franklin, our deputy district attorney, is she on the line somewhere?
She's joining now.
Okay. Shauna, are you with us?
I am. You get my, there we go.
Oh, very good. There you are.
The light's shining.
All right, well, we are at item five in our agenda, and we have a proclamation for you. I don't know if you have it in hand. I've, I've signed it, uh, but I don't know if it made it to you.
Not quite yet.
We're in a virtual world here. It looks something like this. Oops, disappeared.
I haven't.
Looks something like that. There, oh, Stacy's got it. Excellent. But let me just, uh, let me just read a little bit from it, so everybody knows what the proclamation is about. So this is given in recognition of Shauna Franklin, Deputy District Attorney, for bringing the District Attorney's Youth Academy to Rancho Cordova, and it's dated today, November 2nd, 2020. Whereas Shauna Franklin began working for the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office in 1999 in various capacities, including prosecuting misdemeanors, felonies, domestic violence, career criminals, sexual assaults, major narcotics, gangs, and homicides. And whereas for the last four years, Ms. Franklin has been a community prosecutor in Rancho Cordova, working with the city and local agencies, including law enforcement, code enforcement, and fire, to increase the quality of life for the residents of Rancho Cordova. And whereas Ms. Franklin participates in youth outreach, education prevention programs, speaks about the dangers of using social media and cell phones, as well as guns. And whereas Mrs. Franklin, Ms. Franklin is most proud of the outreach to youth that she does through the Sacramento County District Attorney's Youth Academy, it's a 12-week course designed to teach high school students about the criminal justice system. And whereas Ms. Franklin brought the youth academy to Rancho Cordova youth, educating them on forensics, gangs, narcotics, the dangers of distracted driving, and human trafficking. And whereas through the DA's Youth Academy, Rancho Cordova and other areas' youth hear from experts in law enforcement, probation officers, judges, defense attorneys, prosecutors, victim advocates, scientists, and community-based organizations, and the students even spend one evening participating in a mock trial and being allowed a lawyer or a witness. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby honor Shauna Franklin for making a difference in the lives of youth in Rancho Cordova, and encourages all to participate in honoring the spirit of this celebration as an important event in the history of our city and its social vitality. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed the second day of November, 2020. So all that said, Shauna, thank you for our contributions, uh, not only as our community prosecutor, which have been tremendous, uh, partnership we have with the district attorney's office, in working on those quality of life issues here in Rancho Cordova, but thank you for bringing this youth academy to Rancho Cordova. As I just described in this proclamation, it has, uh, potential for enormous impact for our youth, and we really appreciate your leadership in making it available for the, for the kids of Rancho Cordova. So if there's anything you'd like to add?
Well, I just wanna say.
Please feel free.
Thank you so much. Um, I'm really humbled by this acknowledgement, and I will accept it, not for myself, but on behalf of the Sacramento DA's office, and all of our city and county justice partners that make this youth academy possible. As you indicated, the 12-week program, uh, designed to introduce the youth to many aspects of the criminal justice system as we can in that time period, that task would quite simply not be possible without countless individuals volunteering their time to give presentations. The sheriff's department, the police department, probation, for public defenders, and of course, members of my office from the DA's office. We've graduated well over 300 students from just our Rancho Cordova Youth Academy. We have four academies throughout the county, but just from our Rancho one, we've graduated well over 300 students. And I'd like to thank the students, too, um, because they come on their own free will, on their own volition. They dedicate their time, they commit their time and their energy each week, um, to the class. It's this collaborative effort between all of our community justice partners and, and the youth that, um, really gives us hope, I think, for our future. I'd like to just take a minute, too, to thank all of the city officials, but in particular, Cyrus, um, thank you so much for the generous use of City Hall to host our class each week, and to your facility staff, who every week made sure that we were all set up, um, just how it needed to be for whatever the particular classes that we were hosting that night. Rancho Cordova, I have learned in the last four years, is truly a special place to work, and I just continue to be grateful for our partnership. So thank you so much for this acknowledgement tonight.
Thank you very much, Shauna.
David, can I ask you a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
Um, Shauna, what are the, what are the ages or requirements to be in the class?
The, the, um, it is any high school student. So it used to be, um, because some of the, some of the topics can be slightly sensitive, we used to have it be sophomores and up, but we wound up opening it up to freshmen, um, after I actually brought my freshman, um, at the time, to a class to, to get her feel on what she thought. Um, and so we wound up opening it up to freshmen with the caveat that there are a couple of topics. We talk about human trafficking, um, we talk about gangs and guns, and topics that can be a little sensitive, but so, so lo- long answer, um, any high school student in the area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, very good. We are gonna move on to our next item, which is public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. And actually, we have many ways to do public comment. Now, if you're in the room, hand in the card. If you're not in the room, you can raise your hand and wave on Zoom. And if you look carefully at our agenda, there are other phone numbers you can call and things to do from those phone numbers to also get recognition, to make public comment at this point. You do not have to be in the city council chambers. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by me at the point on the agenda when that item is gonna be heard. Uh, speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less, and to state their name and community residence. Note that, under provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of this agenda. So that being said, Stacy, do we have public comment?
We do. We have two public speaker cards for individuals in the room at this moment in time. We'll start with Walter Little. Walter, if you will come forward, you'll have three minutes.
Oh, Walt, I didn't quite recognize you there. I should've known that was you. I spent the morning with Walt.
Good evening, members of the council.
It's on?
It's on.
Okay.
Goodie, uh, members of the council, the reason I show up this evening for just a moment is the fact that, um, something extraordinary has happened, um, is it in terms of my experiences of life, and that is that be today, um, the Cordova Community Food Locker took on a whole new identity. Uh, the mission is the same, but, um, we changed our name, uh, to begin with, from the Cordova Community Food Locker to the Rancho Cordova Food Locker, and rebranded everything so that it has this. And it says, um, our, our, um, fight song, if you will, is Fight Hunger and Fighting Hunger and Feeding Hope. And the reason we, um, took, went this direction is, um, when we started the food locker back in 1987, um, it was, in fact, legally a ministry of the Catholic Church. And, but we didn't brand it that way because we wanted the entire community be a part of it. And we have been very, very successful at that over the years. Recently, uh, because of, um, wonderful things that have happened to us along the way, um, we have outgrown that, and we have now become an independent 501(c)(3), um, which we are, um, working together with many different organizations, um, to expand our ability to feed the hungry. Um, and this morning, we had a celebration, changing all of the signage around, and it was dedicated primarily towards the volunteers, who are the backbone of any organization when you're talking about reaching out to the public. It has just been an absolutely wonderful experience on my part, or, and for me, to work with such caring and generous people over the years, uh, because they're the ones, as you know, that make everything happen. And so we're looking forward to go, going forward, um, hopefully to find a bigger, uh, place for us to live so that we can expand even more. Uh, but the, um, that the program as it is coming together is just absolutely beyond anyone's imagination. Um, we just, it, and looking back, it's all the little things that happened that have brought us to this place, including, uh, the city council of Rancho Cordova, who have supported us just unbelievably. Cyrus has worked tirelessly on our behalf when asked, and, um, it is just a real privilege, um, for me to be here this evening, uh, to, um, dedicate, um, our new look, and each one of you are gonna get another hand, another bag to put your other bags in. So, uh, they'll, I'm leaving them over here at the center, at the, uh, counter, and, um, please feel free to make contact with me or reach out to the food locker, come over and take a look at what we're doing. Our numbers are constantly growing.
Please wrap up your comments.
And I, yes, I'm getting a smile from, uh, it's, cut it off. So, um, God bless each of you for all of the things that you have done, and, um, I look, I look forward to working with you to making it even more responsive to the needs of our people.
Thank you very much, Walt. Are there questions?
Nice shirt, Walter.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you. Thank you, gentle people. God bless.
Thank you, Walter.
I was there this morning for the, for the rebranding, uh, and they had a huge troop of volunteers present. It was, uh, really neat. I congratulated them all on creating so much hope in Rancho Cordova, extending hope and creating more hope in our community, which of course is the measure of a, of a truly great community. Do you have hope for the future? Any other comments? All right. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your work.
Our next.
Next in public comment, Stacy?
Our next public comment speaker will be Helen Bashaw. Close?
Good evening, everybody. Um, this week, I want to talk about the lack of compliance with the request for information. Um, I'm not gonna name names this time, but I have sent letters to various people requesting information. And I might not be connected with, uh, to a particular event, but I still have the right to the information. And when I've reached out to some people in positions and they're non-compliant, it leaves me to believe that maybe I need to go outside of Rancho to have somebody scrutinize as to why I'm not getting my information. Thank you.
Um, Helen?
What?
If you could just, you could have a conversation with me later or, or now. Um, did you make inquiries of like department heads at City Hall and not get responses? Is that?
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to translate what you.
Oh, yeah.
What you said there.
Okay, this is the, this is the deal. Um, other people have come in and talked with people, and they get the information. Um, I've put it in writing. I've come in and visited and shared information with people, and, um, nothing happens. I've sent various emails to, to people, and two of them have been on death's ear to them. When somebody I know uses and, and talks for information and uses my information to gather information, she talks to a particular person, four days later, she had all the information she needed. Something is wrong with this. So I'm about ready to use the government to go up the chain. Thank you.
Yeah, there should be a need for that. Um, Cyrus, I'm gonna ask you to look into that a little bit. We certainly want to be responsive to our residents. Okay, any other public comments, Stacy?
Uh, not in the room, and not via Zoom, and not by phone.
Okay, last chance, anybody out there? All right, we're gonna move on to council reports. And Mr. McGarvey, you're up first. Oh, you got unmute, Bob. I think you are still muted. And we still have no sound, although you are unmuted. Okay, let's, uh, let's pass Bob by. We'll let he and, he and Stacy perhaps work on that. I'm gonna go on to Linda.
Thank you. Um, so, um, the most significant thing that I've done in the last two weeks was, uh, undergo this perfectly wonderful, um, virus test that everybody's addicted to. And, um, and I have to say that was one of the more miserable experiences I can remember. So, um, for everybody out there, I mean, it's just kinda like wearing braces. Until you've done it, you don't know what it's, you don't know what it's like. And, um, so I've expressed sympathy for everybody else who has, um, who has undergone it. And, um, total delight that, um, both Lee and I were negative, and so I get to get on an airplane on Thursday morning and go to Tucson for my mother's 99th birthday.
Wow.
And, um, this is, uh, this is kinda monumental. Um, in the, in the regular world, um, regional transit continues to make a lot of progress, which is, um, pretty unusual for what's going on. The smart ride, they actually turn out to be flexible, and as I am contacted by people who are concerned that this, the, the little smart ride is not, um, um, is not responding to certain areas or not able to take them to places like City Hall, or Kaiser, or UC Davis, or whatever, then I, um, I can talk to, um, RT staff, and when it's possible, they will add those locations. For instance, we just had a constituent whom we all know, who wanted to go to the hall to, to drop their ballots off. And quite frankly, um, the closest they would take them was the north side of the freeway. So she and her kids walked across Zinfandel down to City Hall in order for her to drop her ballot. So, um, City, uh, um, regional transit has that fixed, and they're adding, uh, City Hall, and UC Davis Med Center, and Kaiser to their approved drop-off points, even though they're not within the approved pickup zone. So that part was really good news. The other thing they're doing, they're adopting a strategic plan, and this is the first of two parts. Um, the first part was to kind of ascertain where all of their employees are and get everybody on the same page, um, in terms of goals and aspirations and where they wanna go. And then they will start doing, um, um, ascertainment in the community to figure out, um, what regional transit's mission really should be. And it's, of course, it's perfect timing, considering the fact that the world of work has changed dramatically, and that RT is also, um, as you all know, in a parallel effort to, um, find different methods of locating and servicing their bus and light rail fleets, as well as find themselves an office building that does not, that is not so rundown and decrepit that there are halls lined with buckets to catch the rain in the wintertime. Um, and then finally, um, as David knows, we all found today that a former resident of Rancho Cordova, a wonderful lady, Sue Went, has passed away. And, um, she and her husband, Tom, had relocated only a couple months ago in order to be closer to family in Arizona, and then she abruptly fell ill and, um, did not make it. She, it was not the virus, it was just, um, something unique, but, um, so we really want to adjourn in Sue's memory today. Thank you, David.
Very good. We'll move on to, uh, Donald.
Um, a few things, uh, the Air District met for the final time this year. They, barring some sort of emergency, we won't meet again, uh, until January. Um, I think one of the more interesting things was the rundown of the, uh, smoke reports and, uh, unhealthy air that we have been experiencing. Um, of the, of the worst 10 days, about, what was it, three of them were this year. Um, as this compares with like the campfire, uh, out of the top like 15 days, like 10 of them were campfire, uh, from a couple of years ago. So this didn't get as bad, uh, but it was also much, much earlier in the year. We, we're looking at, can, the campfire was, and a lot of us were in National League of Cities when that started, so we all remember that it was kind of mid-November, so about two weeks from right now, two years ago, um, is when we, we started to see it. So the, the season for this is obviously getting much, much longer. And so, uh, our summers, which traditionally are not nearly as bad, is really when this was hitting. Um, and so the season's obviously, it's starting earlier, uh, on top of the fact that this is, you know, maybe being led by, uh, power companies and other things, uh, you know, having issues. Uh, this year, obviously, we had a lot of lightning storms, um, which I think drove a lot of these problems. Uh, but, uh, in kind of giving the rundown, there are some new grant funding that, that, uh, the Air District got to test toxins and to do some other things. But yeah, it, it, it's, um, it's looking like, you know, if this is the new normal, that, you know, we're going to have a winter, and then we're going to have a spring, and then we're gonna have a fire season. Um, and, and really, summer and fall will, will essentially be a six-month period of when we may tend to see this for, for quite a while. Um, sticking with my environmental comments, uh, there was also a meeting for the Lower American River Conservancy Committee. There was no funding this time. Uh, you know, I, I think a lot of, uh, the conversations, really this time of the year, we were expecting to be, you know, divvying up a bond that passed in March that didn't go through. Um, and so in looking at the governor's budget and some other things, there, there were some placeholders in there for additional funding that may or may not come through, depending on the triggers and the way that the, the state budget was put together. Um, there was some interesting, uh, presentations from a couple of nonprofits that are doing, uh, restoration work, uh, on the American River in, in various different places. One was the Center for Land-Based Learning, uh, who I've worked with, and other things, I didn't actually know that they did restoration work. And so, uh, I connected them with Stacy to see if that's something that maybe we have a project that through Measure H, uh, would make sense for us to partner with them, or other nonprofits to, to, to work on creek restoration within the city. Um, I, I know some of those were responsible for, some of them, you know, obviously, we don't handle the American River, but, you know, we've done, uh, you know, we've worked with Soil Borne and a few other funds. And so, um, gonna see if that's of interest, and if there's some sort of project that, that we could manage together, or, um, find another partner to work with. Uh, besides that, my day job is keeping pretty busy, looking at my calendar, but, um, I wanted to say thank you to, to city staff. I know, uh, we didn't get over to City Hall last, uh, well, we did at about 5:45 on the night of the, the drive-through trunk or treat, and God bless everyone who clearly needed a Halloween outlet, because it was, um, it was a very big backup. And I was here, I, I heard more, uh, you know, over an hour to get through the whole thing. And so we ended up just taking the kids to dinner, 'cause we had a drive-through birthday party prior to that, so we didn't get to that one. Uh, I also want to commend the Somerset community. They did a really great drive-through, uh, trunk or treat, um, in their neighborhood, and my kids have more candy than they'll be able to eat before, before it expires or goes bad, uh, just from those couple of events. Um, and then, and then last, I just want to say thank you to, uh, again, all of the city staff that have tried to come up with great fun events. Um, I know Cordova Community Council did their drive-through event, um, that I think was a little too scary for me to probably take our kids just yet, so we will, we'll experience that in, in a future year. But just thank everybody for trying to be creative, trying to come up with things for kids to do, considering the, the times that we're living in. And then kudos to the community for actually showing up to all this stuff, and, and, you know, wanting to get out and, and experience it. So hopefully, you know, even, even with all the restrictions and the, and the frustration that everybody has with the health orders and everything else that's going on, we can still hopefully find some ways to get together safely and enjoy holidays and, and the days that are, and the, the weeks and months that are, that are coming, um, where we're still gonna have, obviously, a lot of safety protocols that are gonna need to stay in place for probably quite a while. But that doesn't mean we can't still have something. So, thank you.
All right, very good. I think that brings up, uh, Garrett.
So, um, I went to, we had the library, uh, authority meeting. Um, the library's actually doing really well. Um, some dust-ups because of all the, uh, layoffs and stuff we're doing. And so we have an amazing library director, and she seems to be able to handle all this. And we are in negotiations right now to trick her into staying for one more year. So, uh, hopefully, my fingers are crossed that whatever she wants, she can basically have to stay on to this job. Uh, Linda, I know fully backs me on that, that we're going to find a way to keep her, 'cause that, she's like the number one recognized library in like, I think, the United States. I think she's it. And we have her trapped in, uh, downtown Sacramento. And that was it, pretty much, except for my mayoral. And that was it, pretty much, except for my mayoral meetings and some of other stuff. It's great seeing everybody and uh good luck to all my uh my council members as they go into this election.
Thank you, Garrett. Uh back to Bob. Is Bob with us? Not yet. Okay, I'll go on my own report. Um had a number of things happen on the sort of the mayoral calendar in the past couple of weeks. Um Sea Chat, they uh we gave them a resolution, you might remember, at our last meeting, and they requested a meeting with me later in that week. And I showed up, we did a uh classic COVID photo, standing six feet apart, trying to hand something off, you know, like, here's the here's the resolution of the city, which is sort of awkward. But they told me a story about the impact of homelessness uh or the impact of the homeless on their facility that was kind of troubling. And I'm not going to repeat it here or go into detail, just needless to say, this remains a priority, I think, for the city in trying to deal with that issue because we can't have great organizations like Sea Chat feel like they're compromised in some way because of this this situation. Um laws exist for a reason, uh we have certain standards as a community, and those can't be compromised to the detriment of some of the some of the vulnerable folks on either side um in our community. So we have to find a better way to to deal with that. I think the city did a great job last week with Halloween. Between the safe distribution of candy I I heard about and saw about all over the place, social media and and other places, the city's spectacular that was done at City Hall appeared appeared to have been a huge success. I was just a drive-by participant, I didn't actually get there, uh but I did see a huge backlog of cars uh trying to get in, which is a was a good, healthy sign. And then, of course, the uh the drive-through Heart Stoppers event put on by the Cordova Community Council at the Mineshaft Facility, I think was a great success. The uh first night, they had some challenges, there were just so many people there, uh and the event was so much fun. Uh for those of you who don't know, you basically drove through a haunted house, and while you were there, you were given uh your car was given one or two like laser shooters, and you could shoot at the zombies that were in the horror scenes that you were driving through in your car. So it was an interactive, from your car, COVID-safe haunted house with shooting of the zombies for the kids. So Donald, you probably made the right assumption, it might have been too scary for younger kids, but boy, for the kids who are of that age, I think that was a tremendous experience and unlike anything else I've heard of in the region. So once again, Rancho Cordova sets a high bar for fun in our community. I think that's a that's a normal thing uh now. Uh Food Locker, already told you about, great, not rib we're not quite a ribbon-cutting this morning, but a rebranding, now the Rancho Cordova Food Locker. Very proud of the transformation those guys have made, and thanks for Walt for being here earlier. We had a meeting last week about some transportation lobbying efforts that are that we're going to be undertaking in the next couple of weeks. I may call on you council to assist with some of those, although I think uh I've got, I don't know, a dozen or twenty phone calls I'll need to do myself. Cyrus has a similar number, as we try to queue some things up for the California Transportation Commission and position ourselves for, you know, maximum amount of state transportation funding. Um we did a ribbon-cutting last week for the Safe Routes to School project. We did it right along Coloma, um near Chase Drive, and uh we did a ribbon-cutting right there because there's so many kids who, in normal times, walk to school through that sort of narrow corridor, and we've just added sidewalks in that neighborhood, made that course of travel for them as safe as we can. Uh it looks great. Uh most of the neighbors really love it. The uh the funniest comments I've heard, though, were from some neighbors who don't like sort of the bulb-outs on corners, and I asked them specifically, what's the what's the problem with the bulb-out? And the complaint is, was literally, well, it makes me slow down when I drive around the corner. And I had to say, you know, that's actually the point, because there's a lot of kids walking through here and bikes and people walking dogs and all kinds of stuff going on. This is a real pedestrian and bicycle corridor, and we need you to slow down when you make this one this one turn off of uh. Yeah, isn't that it's sort of funny? And and for most of them, as soon as I said that, they're like, oh, well, that makes sense. You know, wasn't but, you know, I and I guess it's working, you know, that's that's engineering safety into your system. I guess it's working in that uh in that context. Uh and finally, we had um a connector board meeting this morning, or I'm sorry, last week, and we had a uh Sacramento Plasterville Rail Corridor JPA meeting this morning. Linda didn't have anything really, neither one of them had anything particularly notable for Rancho Cordova purposes happened in it. But uh it's been a busy, even in days of COVID and then sort of this quiet time, late October, early November, it's been a busy week to be a busy couple of weeks to be the mayor.
Yeah, they probably the only thing from this morning that anybody would be interested in knowing, um as I reported to uh staff, the fact that the um Hazel Avenue Interchange Project probably isn't going to kick off until two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, that was news. There was also news there and that the the corridor is involved in some homeless camp cleanup, even down into Rancho Cordova. That I'm I'm unaware of the the role for them um in that, but apparently another another agency is also involved.
Can I ask a quick question about the the Hazel Interchange? Um because this goes back to the year I was mayor. I know the owners of Rudy's came to see me because they had gotten a letter from uh they they got a letter from somebody trying to represent them in 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 a case of an eminent domain at some point. So I was just going to say, can somebody reach out to the owner from Economic Development to just let them know what the the timeline was on that? And Cyrus, you probably remember this, it there was a question about some signage that they wanted to do because they thought they were going to lose parking and you wouldn't be able to see them from the highway or something like that. But just making sure that the folks that are that are going to be affected by that project are aware of any timeline changes, because last time I met with them, that was like a ten-year-off project. So if it's been delayed more or less or whatever, um because essentially what's happening is the businesses right along there are getting solicited by attorneys that want to represent them in negotiating with the county, I believe, and and Caltrans and whoever else. But it freaked them all out thinking it was happening, it was going to happen in like six months, so.
They did say that there was some right-of-way acquisition that needed to happen, and of course, that not only is um not only is the winery about ten feet from uh from Hazel Avenue, but um but the the guys um uh which was originally DNS, who who remodeled that gas station on the corner, kind of sitting right in.
Yeah, the gas station, Rudy's Samurai Sushi, and I think the hotel might be affected. I'm just saying, if if somebody in Economic Development can reach out, because four years ago, when I was mayor, like they a bunch of them started getting letters, and they were getting very nervous, and I don't think anybody has really kept them up to speed on what the timeline is.
That's a wise suggestion, Donald, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I just appreciate you sharing, but if it threw off alarm bells because I I ended up taking a handful of meetings.
Probably the the best part is that because the fire station is right there, obviously, they're going to have to maintain access along there, so it's not like they can just shut the door and nobody will be able to get in anywhere.
Yeah, but a lot of our businesses probably are not aware of whatever the timeline is there, and and they and they weren't when it came out before.
Donald, you had a comment of no grants available this year uh through the Parkway?
Um, no, 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 no.
None were grant, none were applied for, right? Or something like that? No one applied for funding, is that how it worked?
Um, yes, they 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 had they put out a bid and nobody submitted, um so we didn't end up spending anything. I I I can't remember what they said if there was actually still funding available. I think they were taking bids, but I I I I'll have to go back and look at the agenda. I tried to bring it up, and their website's not working.
Do they hold it over? Do you have any idea? Do they hold it over to the next year or what happens there?
Yes, because once it's been allocated, they they have it. Um the only problem is that I I believe what was allocated in the state budget, I I believe likely changed in 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 um August when they finally adopted a state budget.
Yeah.
Um and so I I I don't know what kind of funding was available. A lot of it that we were expecting was going to be coming from that state farm that didn't pass. So the water parks bomb that that didn't go through, along with the school bomb that didn't go through.
Okay.
Um so a at this point, yeah, I mean, the only allocation that they'll get would be in the state budget, which is pretty thin, we all know what they're looking at. Um so yeah, I I I don't know of anything uh concrete right now as far as projects, but yeah, there there were not submissions, but I also was, it it seemed unclear that there was actually funding to fund them, to put it that way, which may have been one of the reasons that they didn't see a lot of submissions.
So Cyrus, we should be, we should be sure to be positioned for something anytime that opportunity comes up. Goodness knows we've got a lot of work that could be done in our section of the Parkway. I don't know if we need to partner with the county and, you know, we do the engineering design and do the bid and, you know, just get their agreement that if it's funded, it's funded, or what? But it seems like there's a lot, a lot of opportunity to enhance our section of the Parkway and get better connections to our neighborhoods and.
Keep in mind, of the like four or five projects that have been funded, we're one of them. So the the American River Ranch Soilborne.
Yep.
Uh project was partially funded in round one and then fully funded in in round two. Um and then they finally went in and I think did uh Discovery Park, but then they also did a land acquisition and a couple other ones.
I'm greedy for us, so.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, as much as we can out of it. Um the other question Cyrus had for you was the Purple Air. Donald mentioned, you know, coming potential uh air quality issues. We still have that underway, I think, right? It was a difficulty in getting the the sensors as rapidly as we'd hoped?
Yes, actually, this uh this is an effort that we're doing in partnership with the Air District, and uh they're very interested, actually. They would like to install as many of these possible in the city and tie it into the overall monitoring stations that we have in the region. The Purple Earth uh uh devices have are on order, and the last uh the latest estimate we had was uh towards the end of November, before we get them.
Okay. We'd recruited some some citizens to be engaged in this, so this is a perfect Rancho Cordova-style project. Citizen comes up with the idea, we figure out what the barrier is, we knock that down, we try to, you know, get them all plugged in so they can do it on their own um to all of our benefit, so.
Well, and Alberto had to remind me that that we were already doing it with with Air District staff and a handful of other folks already. So they they're starting to build the infrastructure, I guess, for it anyways. And it those meetings can get very sciency, uh and you you can forget some of the details, but yeah, I guess it's been in the works for a while.
Yeah, so. Sciency, huh? That's a.
That's right.
So we we've ordered about fifteen of those. Yeah, we have, we have about fifteen on order, so most likely we would double that number to to get them in more hands in the community.
Okay, good. Did we get Bob back with us, or have we still got technical difficulties there?
Bob should be with us by phone. Bob, can you hear us?
I see two phones connected, one is muted. Probably the one Bob is on is muted right now, if I'm looking at the right one.
The five oh eight is Bob.
Oh, is he there?
There we go.
Ah ha, Bob, you're with us, excellent.
With us, yeah. My uh computer is cooperating tonight, so.
All right. Go right ahead, you can do your report now if you'd like.
And I'm going to have David working on it with me tomorrow, so where are we right now?
It's time for your report, if you'd like to give one, Bob.
Well, what I was going to do was just have a little bit and say um thanks to the staff for that um Halloween, everything they did in front of City Hall and uh Community Council for what they've done. And then um I got a little bit of report from Mosquito Vets Control Board, things are moving along um as we expect them to about this time of the year. They're still finding a few mosquitoes in the winters in Arden Arcade area. They'll continue to contact the treatment uh conduct treatment in the weather permits. Um our West Nile vi uh West Nile virus season is over, and we found nothing in our mosquito um population over the last couple of rounds of testing. And the uh species of the culex are becoming less active, so everything is going to go down because of the cooler weather. We're hoping that the rain will begin, that will put some of them out of uh doing anything until they wake up again in the springtime. So we will possibly have um good weather as far as the mosquitoes are concerned. I'm hoping that the um people on TV are saying that the weather is going to be giving us some rain this coming weekend, so I'll keep my fingers crossed on that. I'm really glad to hear also that um Walt was able to give us some good information about the uh uh food locker. It sounds great. What I've got.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Right.
We are going to go on to, oh, City Managers' Report, uh item number eight. Cyrus, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I thank you, and thank you for acknowledging the the Halloween spectacular. We had a very successful event. We had probably hundreds of cars in the queue, and our staff worked really hard to prepare booths for the for the children to uh to enjoy. Uh most of them dressed up. We had uh about eight hundred fifty bags of candy prepared, and we were able to hand them all out. We had other goodies that we we handed out, so it was a very successful event. I want to thank uh uh all the staff members who uh put a lot of work into it and appreciate appreciate their commitment and dedication. I also want to thank for Chamber of Commerce and Children's Museum, they were partners with us on that event, and uh they they were able to to help with uh with that event on that day. Uh the only other thing, Mr. Mayor, that I want to point out is that our two thousand nineteen uh comprehensive uh annual financial report, our CAFR, so-called the CAFR, has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in uh financial reporting. This is um uh given by the Government Financial Officers Association, and it's the highest form of recognition um in governmental accounting and financial reporting. So want to uh acknowledge our finance team, Kim Jordan and her team, for uh doing an excellent job in uh achieving this uh award another year for us. We've been receiving this almost uh every year for the last ten years or so. So thank you, team, for for a great job. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. I do have uh an image here. Um I don't know if I could share it by sharing my desktop, but it seems to portray the the city's spectacular event last week. I don't know if this will work or not. Oh, I'm disabled from screen sharing, oh, well. Um it appears there was some dancing going on, actually, at the at the spectacular involving some city management folks, um most of whom are in costume, but not all, unless it's a a costume I didn't quite get, that could be.
I I dressed as a city manager, but uh but I was uh I was able to carry some pom-poms with me on that day.
There we go. I think I think you were uh being chased by like uh Scooby-Doo as well, so if if I have that character right from the from the image. Maybe we'll be able to share that later, Stacy, or put that up on the city homepage, something like that. All right, we're going to go on in that case to uh our consent calendar items, item number nine. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. So these are items nine point one through nine point six. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
During that, I'll move approval of the consent calendar items nine point one to nine point six.
Second. Second by Terry, roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number ten, consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I am going to open the public hearing. Uh do we have any speaker cards for this item?
We do not, and I do not see any speakers in Zoom or by phone.
Okay, these are items uh ten point one through ten point three. Uh since there is no public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any items the council wishes to pull or discuss? If not, I'm open to a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved by Terry, second by Budge, roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander. Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number eleven on the agenda. If the city clerk would announce that subject.
A resolution to.
I'm sorry, eleven point one.
A resolution to approve the Woodside Homes, uh, Acacia, did I say that right? At Cypress special development permit and major design review project number DD one zero zero one zero.
All right, and we are in for a staff report.
So let me move a few people over, just a moment.
All right.
Okay, we should have June, Darcy, and Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. June Couse with the Planning Department.
Hi, June.
Hello, and I'm waiting for the PowerPoint.
For those not talking, can you mute because we're getting some feedback?
Okay. All right, so this is the Woodside Homes Acacia at Cypress. Woodside Homes is requesting a special development permit to vary from the Sunridge specific plan. Require building front.
Hold on just a second, June, we've got, uh, serious feedback coming from somewhere. It might be public podium or someone in the room, I'm thinking, in City Hall, council chambers. Just be sure and mute everything up that we can.
Is there still echo?
Yeah, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a duplication of everything she says, everyone else.
Yeah, with about a half a second delay.
Right.
June, are you calling in and on your computer?
No, I'm just on my computer. I can come in the room.
Yeah, it's, it's something really weird's happening to your sound.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just come into the, uh, City Council room.
Okay.
It sounds mostly like the Borg from, um, Star Trek: Next Generation or.
Yeah.
Deep Sp- I'm not sure which one was it. Voyager, Voyager probably was.
They were in a bunch of them, but they started off. The next.
I remember what series it started with.
It was a, they were even in some of the movies.
Kent is requesting a special development permit to vary from the Sunridge specific plan required building front and rear setbacks. And a major design review for four floor plans with each floor plan with three elevations.
Thanks, June, that's much better.
Can you, I, I, I'm trying to advance. Okay. So the subdivision is located within Douglas ninety-eight and that's at the southwest corner of Grantline Road and Douglas Road. And Douglas ninety-eight, um, the area is highlighted in, or outlined in red. Uh, right now, WAT Communities and Woodside Homes are building the rest of, uh, Douglas ninety-eight. And there's approximately one hundred lots in this section of Douglas ninety-eight. So the Sacramento County zoning code, as adopted by the city upon incorporation, established procedures for special development permits. Which is the purpose for each permit may be issued as to encourage a creative, more efficient approach to the use of the land to provide a means of greater creativity and flexibility in design that is provided under the strict application of the zone design standards. So looking at this table, they are requesting a front setback to the building, reduction from sixteen feet to twelve point five feet. And a rear setback twenty percent of a lot depth to ten foot for a single story and fifteen foot for a two-story. So the rest of the, uh, setbacks to the garage, the side setback, and the setback for the corner lot are all the same. The existing front yard setbacks for Douglas ninety-eight are between ten to sixteen feet. So all the rest of, between WAT Communities and the rest of Woodside Homes has a variety. And the requested front yard setback of twelve and a half feet also allows a variety. Plan three, for example, um, is seventeen feet for the front, uh, building setback. Each plan includes a covered outside area called a California Room. And there is a compensation to the rear yard. So built within the Sacramento County Code, which was incorporated with the Sunridge, uh, specific plan. The main building may project into the required rear yard, provided that an equal area is provided as a yard or court within the buildable portion of the lot. And so I'm going to show you on the next slide what that entails. When we look at, um, going into the rear yard, uh, we also look at taking some space that's part of that buildable area, so a compensation. So without this California Room, the plans would qualify for the rear yard compensation. So looking at the red area, that's the, um, area, this is Plan Two. That's, um, the projecting of ten foot for a single-story, uh, home. And then the green area was the California Room. So we take that red area, if that California Room wasn't there, um, this is just an open, uh, space. It's got a roof and it's open. I'm sure you've seen the, the alfresco dining part of, uh, the California Room. And that would be compensated. So the plans.
So it's really just, it's really just a trade-off, June?
Correct. And this, and this, if it didn't have a California Room, then they wouldn't getting, they wouldn't need that, um, requested rear yard, uh, setback variance or special development permit. So Plan One rear elevation offset, offset is fifteen feet. Not all of the, the home is going to be coming at ten, ten feet, as you can see, it's nineteen feet. Plan Two rear elevation offset is nine feet. And Plan Three rel- rear elevation offset is fifteen feet. So they're all not going to be right up at ten feet or fifteen feet. Plan Four rear building setback does meet the Sunridge specific plan setback of twenty percent. And that's on a lot depth of fifty-five by one oh five lot size. And that.
Please explain the term, please explain the term offset.
Offset that, um, there's an area, as you can see, the red area is ten feet from the rear property line. But the rest of the house is nineteen feet and two inches. So it's not a box, it's got a, um, you know, projected area and then it comes back.
Uh, uh, but what's, what's offset about it? I mean, I, I, the word offset is confusing me.
It's, it's just not, you know how some of the homes have the, uh, their rear elevation is straight? And this is pulled back in, so it's offset from the rear property line.
Or the ten feet is a projection.
A projection. And the major design review, so Plan One is two thousand three hundred and ninety-five square feet. And Plan Two, two thousand six hundred and sixty-two square feet. The elevations provided are modern California ranch, modern farmhouse, and modern, modern prairie. Plan Two and Four offer optional home plus suites or the multi-generation, um, family living. And, um, Plan Three includes a three-bay tandem garage. And that's the plan that has that front setback is at seventeen feet to the building. Plan Four includes a three-car garage and the third car is, uh, recessed. There are conditions included, um, that the garage doors shall include windows and Plan Four cannot be located adjacent to each other. Pop-out trim are on all elevations and that gives that finished appearance.
Can I ask a question about, um, the bottom elevations there? Are those windows down low enough to where people could walk by and see into their garage? Are those windows in all four panels?
Yes, those are the, the windows and most of them are, uh, opaque. So you wouldn't be able to see through.
You wouldn't be able to, okay. Because I, I mean, the other ones seem traditional, they have windows that let in light into a garage, but somebody couldn't look in to see if your car's there or your bikes and stuff.
Correct.
So, okay, so long as that's not actually see-through.
And the ones in the applicant who's Brian from Woodside Homes, uh, he can answer to that, but most of them I've seen have been a frosted-type window.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just, I've never seen that designed before. I, I just had security concerns as far as, I mean, you can't put, you know, blinds or something over that or we will, we wouldn't want that, um, so, okay.
And so for the environmental, the proposed project, it's been analyzed with the Sunridge specific plan EIR. And it also had a mitigated declaration and, um, MND for the East Side properties. The proposed residential project, um, therefore is exempt under Secu exemption one five one eight two. And that's the residential projects pursuant to a specific plan. Staff recommends that City Council find the project exempt from further Secu review and adopt the resolution approving the special development permit and major design review for Woodside Homes subject to the finance, project plans, and conditions of approval. And I believe the applicant is on, um, if you have any questions for him.
David, I do have some questions for Brian.
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. Um, Brian, are we communicating?
Good evening. I'm here, I, I have two mute buttons, I gobbles.
Okay. So, um, um, just help me understand kind of the overall concept here. Um, it looks like the one hundred lots that are surrounded by the red line are the lots where this is applicable?
That is correct.
Okay, and none of these are alley-loaded?
Correct, these are all traditional front-load lots.
Okay. Um, are any of them, do any of these lots have ten feet, only ten feet, all the way across the back of the house?
No, and I wanted to, I wanted to explain the word offset, what I think what, uh, Ms. June was trying to say. And that is, um, on the single-story, in no case will you have the home any closer than ten feet from the rear, uh, property line. And on a two-story, in no case would you be within fifteen feet. But as demonstrated here, in every case, the homes, the backyards are essentially L-shaped as you see here, where a portion of the house goes up to that ten-foot line and then a portion of the house is recessed, uh, further back so that you have a larger usable area of the backyard. And so the reason we're designing it this way is, is twofold. Number one, it, it gives some variety to the back of the house. As you know, we don't want just a wall of, of walls at ten feet going down the backyard. But number two, it offers privacy to our homebuyers that they can build their own little enclave back there between the California Room and these larger recessed areas in the backyard. They can have some privacy, uh, offered by that one element of the house being extended to that ten-foot mark. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, and I really appreciate that. Number one, I absolutely adore the California Room. A lot of what, um, a lot of what we've been touring lately has, has that same concept so that rather than have to go out and build your own patio, Oral and I, you actually have it built into the, the structure of the house to begin with. And that is such a huge improvement. Um, I just was really concerned and confused about the, um, the terms compensation and, um, offset. And then it actually, um, just looking at page six in the staff report, it seems like in general, these are nice lots, they're fifty-seven hundred, almost fifty-eight hundred square feet. And, um, and they're all fifty-five feet by a hundred and five feet. So it's, and it kind of made me wonder why, um, why the special develop, well, not why the, no, it made me wonder why they don't fit on that lot beginning.
Well, a- and if I, if I may, uh, shorten the question, why, why can't we make it fit within the, uh, standard setbacks?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. Um, I think Ms. June did a very good job of teeing up the why, and that is, um, we come to you because we have some unique circumstances that we're trying to fit into these homes. Um, there's, as you can see from the floor plan here, there's some unique, uh, features that I don't think we've seen in the past. And this is a reflection of the world that we live in today and we believe we'll be living in for some time. We have, uh, incorporated into each of these homes some unique pockets. Uh, you don't see a big, large office or a big, large den. But instead you see a small, uh, pocket office or remote learning area where kids can be plugged in to school behind a glass wall to give them that privacy, but have parents still able to see what's going on from that great room kitchen area. You have a small workout area, given that it's hard to get to the gym anymore. You have a small workout area where you can set up your Peloton or treadmill or whatever it is that you do. And so, uh, you know, you have a, a cleaning station when you walk in the, through the garage, you have a place to wash your hands and so forth. So you have these added little spaces to add functionality to these, um, uh, these homes that we're living in today, that we're spending a lot more time in today, as evidenced by the meeting we're in right now. And so between all these little spaces, we need a little bit more room. And the buyer that we're, that we're really noticing, we need more homes for in Rancho Cordova's, we need more homes for larger families. We need more homes for, uh, executives and so forth. And so with that need for executive housing and for large families, uh, the homes on these, what are now considered larger lots, um, these provide the bedroom count, they provide the office space, they provide the classroom space, they provide the workout space. All these little spaces that may have not been as important twelve months ago, we're now providing those spaces for them here.
I did pick up on that and I would compliment you, um, it's really forward-thinking. And, and, you know, try, we're all trying to get, like, in a couple of years. And, um, this is a, this is a good start at that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep. Um, also, if I may, I, I think it was Mr. Also, if I may, I think it was Mr. Terry you had the question about the garage windows, on those stacked garage windows. Those are indeed a frosted type of glass. I have seen it throughout the community. I think Premier Homes is doing it, Cressley Homes is doing it. We're not doing it because they're doing it. It's just a kind of a modern twist on design. And yes, they are opaque, so you cannot see directly into the garage and take inventory of it there.
Okay, good. I figured as much, I just, I've never seen it look like that before. So, thank you.
Well, the elevations, there's no question, the elevations definitely are more creative. And there's a couple of the two-story homes that have panels of those same windows that go up through the center front, the front elevation, and I really like that. I just, I really, I have a personal bias against the entire yard being wide, and that's why I asked the question. I just wanted to make sure it really wasn't only 10 feet wide the whole way.
No, we need usable rear yards. My kids need a place to go outside because I can't have them inside all day.
David, if there are no further questions, I would be happy to move approval.
Any other comments, council?
We do have a public-
Can I open the public hearing? Opening a public hearing, do we have any public comments on this side?
We do. Helen Bishaw, if you can come forward, please.
Hello again. I'm looking at this, and I have concerns when I hear about the reduction of the setbacks. And it has me concerned because I'm looking at these lots, and I'm wondering about the greenhouse effect. I'm wondering about in 10 or 20 years from now, where's the shade going to be around these houses? And the backyard does not seem big enough for what the modern family's doing with the children being at home. It just, to me, looks like we're all concrete in these developments, and we're not doing anything for the environment. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, and, you know, it is a nice plan, but it should be on a bigger lot. I personally, in a one-story, wouldn't want a two-story breathing down my neck. And that's what it looks like. There's no real privacy with the room for the trees because depending on where you put your trees and the type of trees and the root base, those trees could be growing into your house in 20 years, so now your concrete's lifted. So they're my concerns. I just look, it's a sterile environment that in 20 years is not going to be the home-type environment that enhances communities to act like family. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Any other public comment?
Not that I see, no.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Any of their council members wish to ask a question?
I will, I will move.
All right, motion made by Budge, is there a second?
David, can I make one quick comment, or just more of just a process thing? As we continue, you know, to see development moving forward, even in a pandemic, to me, I'm going to just reiterate my request that I've been making for probably seven years now, that we should really be thinking about getting a planning commission back. A lot of, Linda has great questions, sure, but, you know, as we continue to see more and more development coming online, you know, if some of these don't need to rise to City Council and have everybody take a night to do this, and they could be dispensed with at a planning commission, I think, one, it's a great opportunity to save us time so that we can focus on other items, and it also gives an opportunity to the public to have more of a formal engagement with the city. And, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, building a bench and having people that, you know, understand the city by the time they decide to run for City Council or School Board or a lot of other things. And I don't know very many cities around here that don't have a planning commission. So again, you know, thank you, Brian, for being here and, you know, answering the questions. But ultimately, I think this could have been handled at the planning commission level at some point. So I'm just throwing that out there again, that, you know, as we get this year, we see Rio de Loro, we see Easton probably selling off some of their land to more developers. You know, this is a great time to consider reinstating the planning commission.
I agree.
And with that, I will second the motion for Brian.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Say none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Hi.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Gatewood. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Sander.
Hi.
Okay, thank you all, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to regular calendar items. Item number 12, specifically 12.1, a technology initiatives update. So this is an informational item, but I believe we have a staff report on it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kim Duran-Carras-Giorgio, Administrative Services Director. And I'm excited to be here this evening to share with you the progress that the city has been making on several information technology initiatives. As you know, enhancing our technology has been a high priority of the organization, and a great deal of work effort has gone into these initiatives. Tonight, you will hear from a few key individuals in the organization that are leading the effort in making these upgrades happen and to update you on what's been accomplished and what's on the horizon. There we go. So our first presenter tonight is going to be David McCoy, our Senior IT Analyst. And before I hand it over to David, I would like to call your attention to the first bullet point on this slide. And while David will speak to it further, what I would like to acknowledge are the efforts of David and Stephen Wasserman, our IT team, that were able to transition our entire city organization, all of our staff, to remote work capabilities when the COVID-19 pandemic started in just two days. And that is a remarkable accomplishment at the time when so many other organizations were really struggling and trying to figure out how to make it all happen. So I do want to call that attention to that. So with that, I'll hand it over to David.
Thank you, Kim. So continuing on what- Continuing on what Kim had started. Starting back in early 2020, we were notified that city staff would need to begin working from home ASAP due to COVID-19 and safety concerns. So we were able to utilize our existing VPN and virtualized desktop infrastructure to rapidly transition our staff from working here on-site to at-home. We deployed numerous laptops, tablets, monitors, and other devices so that everyone could work from home, just as if they were here in the office. We had our staff working seamlessly from home well before many of our peer cities in the region even knew how to begin this transition. Once people started working from home, we quickly realized that we needed a way for staff to have meetings and to be able to collaborate with one another. We looked at several different video conferencing solutions and finally settled on Zoom. We quickly deployed Zooms, the Zoom software and accounts to all staff, giving them the ability to join and create instant video and audio meetings anytime they needed. Then, to further enhance collaboration between staff, we deployed Microsoft OneDrive, which is a cloud-based file storage and sharing system. Using OneDrive, staff can share and collaborate on documents together in real time. Using both Zoom and OneDrive, we have solved the need for staff to physically be here on-site or together in a conference room, allowing them the freedom to work from nearly anywhere. Then with everyone working comfortably from home, we then shifted our focus to enhancing our network and system security. In the age of COVID, there has been a substantial increase in cyber attacks, malware, and ransomware threats. We take these threats extremely seriously and do everything we can to detect and block these attempts on our systems. We upgraded our endpoint protection software, which is the software that gets installed on all of our desktops, laptops, and servers, to an industry-leading solution that uses enhanced threat detection based on real-time machine learning that can detect and stop malware and ransomware from spreading almost immediately. Next, we upgraded our firewall to a next-generation machine-learning-powered firewall. This new firewall literally detects and actively blocks thousands of attempted vulnerability scans on our network and systems every single day. These scans come from hackers, automated bots, scripts from around the globe, and are continually testing various ways to gain access to our systems. Then we deployed additional threat detection software on our internal networks and systems to continually monitor for any unusual activity that may take place within our network and sends out immediate alerts or takes automated action if there is a real threat active inside of our network that may cause harm to our systems. Next, we replaced our aging security camera system here at City Hall with a modern, cloud-based solution that has extremely smart features that allows our facility staff to quickly respond to building security alarms, help law enforcement in the event that something suspicious has occurred, or even locate someone within the building. Most recently, we've completed a hardware refresh in which we've upgraded most of our core networking infrastructure to be more robust, reliable, and redundant. And if you can go to the next slide. Now, looking to 2021, these are some of the projects we're looking to complete in the next year. Firstly, and probably the one I'm most excited about, is that we've been working closely with Powell and city staff to come up with a technology plan for the new Rancho Cordova Youth Center. Together, we have come up with some great ideas for state-of-the-art computer lab, sound, and video systems that will truly set us apart from anything else in the region. Next, we will begin collaborating with city staff to define what it means to be a smart city and define how we can get there. To me personally, being a smart city means that we use information and communication technologies to increase operational efficiency, rapidly share information with the public, and improve the quality of our services. Next, we'll be upgrading all conference rooms to become what is known as a Zoom room, meaning that each room will contain dedicated, high-quality audio and video equipment that will allow staff to effortlessly and seamlessly connect to and participate in Zoom meetings from any conference room. The council chambers will also be receiving several upgrades that will better integrate Zoom with our council meetings, greatly simplifying the setup and connections that need to take place to get our council meetings into Zoom. Next, we will be upgrading our phone system as our current system is quite dated, lacks mainstream support, and is missing many modern features such as built-in collaboration tools, mobile apps, or easy controls. For example, a new phone system can integrate with cellphones, giving staff greater flexibility in making or receiving phone calls when working remotely. Additionally, we're planning hardware refreshes to our servers that will improve performance of our applications and virtual desktops, giving them a better, giving staff a better user experience when they are working on large documents or projects. And of course, as always, we will continue to provide ongoing support and assistance to all of the other business application upgrades you'll be hearing more about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So as we move into the next part of our presentation, which are to highlight some of our business application upgrades. Cities' business applications are the programs that most of our city staff rely on each and every day to do their job. Business application conversions and implementations are a heavy lift for any organization. So you add on top of that the fact that the city has multiple system upgrades underway simultaneously, along with the challenges of COVID-19. And I think it's remarkable that we've been able to accomplish as much as we have in 2020. Many of these projects span multiple years and countless hours of staff time dedicated to making them successful. I'm going to walk through this list and then turn it over to Project Leads to provide more details on each of these initiatives. So just a summary form. We started off the year, January 2020, going live with Civic Clerk Council Agenda and Meeting Management System. In March of 2020, we went live with Phase One of our NRGOV system, and this was the licensing portion. So this enabled the public to be able to do all licensing functions online. And we kicked off configuration work on Phase Two. In July of 2020, we went live with Phase One of OnBase, our new electronic content records management system. And most recently, we awarded a contract and kicked off implementation for a new finance system. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Stacy Leitner, our city clerk, to talk a bit about some of the initiatives under her purview.
The city clerk's office has been busy in 2020, and we are very excited about the programs that we have taken initiative on. We finished the first phase of our OnBase implementation, moving many of our council meeting and finance records from our electronic content management system, SIRE, to what is now OnBase. The public can use the OnBase Public Portal on the city's website to be able to access ordinances, resolutions, minutes, and agendas. Our plan is to build out the records that are available within this public portal in the years ahead so that the public has access to more records without having to necessarily go through the public records request process. To access these records, a member of the public would go to the city's website at www.cityofranchocordova.org. They would click on the link on our homepage that says Council Meeting Agendas and Minutes. And they would use the search tool to be able to find those resolutions, ordinances, minutes, and meeting agendas that you are looking for. Next slide, please. Another technology that we also have implemented is the agenda management software. And the agenda management software also allows the public to be able to access our meeting information, current meeting information. You can actually watch our council meetings live from our website. You can also access upcoming meeting agendas as well as past minutes and meeting packet information. So this is also something that's relatively new. We have the information up there currently for 2020, but we're working hard to make sure that the information from previous years is added to this also. So it is taking our team some time to work on adding those records, but we anticipate that in the next couple of weeks, we should have everything transitioned and available on the website. So to be able to access this as well, you would go to the city's website at www.cityofranchocordova.org. You would access the city meeting agendas and minutes, and you would be able to search for the meetings of what you're looking for. In addition to that, as many of you know, the city clerk's office has also had a hybrid model for our council meetings this year. In addition to having our council chambers open during this entire time to be able to have our council meetings in person, we have also had our meetings available via Zoom. Our meetings are also available by phone, and we have made this an option for all of the public to be able to make public comment as well. And it's a little bit of extra work for us, obviously, to be able to give all of these options, but that's something that's important, and we want to be able to make sure that the public has access to information, to our meetings, and to be able to participate. In 2021, we anticipate working on and finishing several other projects. And some of those include being able to add additional records to our electronic content records management system, OnBase, and expanding the records that are available within our public portal. Two, implementing a certificate of insurance tracking and management software to assist us in the clerk's office called EBICs. And what this will do is it will assist the city staff in receiving annual renewal insurance certificates for work that is being conducted under contract with the city. And then lastly, we plan on implementing an electronic contract routing workflow that will include electronic signatures to be able to store and route contracts that are being initiated to do work. So that's what the city clerk's office has been working on. And I'm very grateful for the team that we have. There's three of us total, and we've had a relatively large undertaking this past year. So thank you to the team, for Stephanie and Kelly.
Thank you, Stacy. So moving on, the next project that we would like to highlight is NRGOV, our land management permitting system. And for this, I'm going to hand it over to Jessica Crone, our resident NRGOV guru, to talk a bit about what we've accomplished so far and what's on the horizon.
Thank you, Kim. Our citizen self-service portal that we branded Ranch Cordova Online has been very successful since we've gone live. Customers can now purchase their business licenses, rental registration, and pet licenses online. So you can see this beautiful picture of our homepage here for Ranch of Cordova. So we have an image here that shows you our most trending licenses that are purchased. This is also a feature that our customers can see, and they can search for the specific license that they'd like. We've had 625 business licenses, 203 rental registrations. We've had 625 business licenses, 203 rental registrations, 610 pet licenses, and almost 2,000 registered customers since March through October the 15th. And we have new customers registering every day. So that is very exciting to see that people are using our online portal. Our Phase 2, we are ramping up, and we are having our departments of building, planning, public works, facilities, and neighborhood services. We're bringing all of them onboard so they can offer online permitting and plans. And we're really excited to be able to streamline the collaboration between customers and staff. So not only will customers be able to submit their permits and plans online, we also have a digital review process where departments can collaborate in real time. Some of the modules and case types that we have are the code management, permit management...
Jessica, can I make a comment about online, please?
Please.
Okay, so when you do get your pet license in the mail, the part that shows up in the windows in the envelope is the online part. It isn't readily recognizable that it's coming from the city of Rancho Cordova. And I'm concerned that people could think it's just an ad and toss it. So I would ask you all to just kind of look at, just look at the, look at the design of the masthead on this piece of paper. That would really help.
Certainly. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We will definitely look into that because we want people to know that it's coming from Rancho Cordova. So yes, thank you for letting us know.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you.
Sure. So with the code management module, we'll have neighborhood services. They'll still be able to have their animal services cases, general nuisance, rental housing, vacant building, just to name a few. Our building department will also be utilizing that module for notice of violations, and they will be able to collaborate with code enforcement on that as well. So again, we're really emphasizing that collaboration. And even public works will be able to utilize it for tree removal cases. Our building department, they will still be able to offer commercial and residential permits online to customers. Public works will have the street use permits, final maps, improvement plans. And something that I think is really exciting is facilities will now be able to offer online room rentals. So that's something new and exciting to offer the community. For planning, they'll have their temporary use permits, entitlements, sidewalk vendors, and others as well. So these are just some of them, and we're coming up with new ones every day and utilizing the system to its maximum. So we're really excited about that. This here is an image of our Blue Beam software, which integrates with EnterGov. And the best part about this is you can see which staff members are currently working on this plan and what items they've added, maybe some comments that they've put on there. And it's really showing how staff can work together in real time, in parallel. They don't have to go running to someone's desk. They don't have to send a separate email. You can see everything in one place and see the work that each department is doing to, you know, give that good customer service to the customer all on one plan review. Here, we're showing what we call back office. This is a view for staff, an example of the parcel manager. So anytime staff wants to see all of the plans, permits, licenses, or code cases that are going on at one location, one parcel, property address, they can readily see it and know what the status is. So again, we're really honing in on linking records and being able to collaborate in real time. And we're still diligently working on our CSS portal, offering custom fields and workflows, trying to streamline it, making it easier for customers to submit these items. We've been building automation so that it will automatically change the permit or plan status based on its approval, and the customer will be able to go online and see the status of their permit or plan. We're also able to auto-generate emails to customers, letting them know when their item has been approved. That is very exciting to offer that. And we are looking forward to bringing this to you and going live with Phase 2 come summer of 2021.
Great. Thank you, Jessica. So we're going to move on to the last two projects of the evening that we wanted to highlight, and these are both finance department initiatives. So I'm going to speak a bit further about this. So the first one being the Enterprise Resource Planning New Finance System with Central Square. So in August, we kicked off implementation of a new finance enterprise system to replace our existing Great Plains software program that has been in place with the city since 2004, 2005. Since we just kicked off the implementation of this project, what I would like to highlight are some of the project objectives and what we are hoping to get out of this system upgrade. The main goal of this project is to build a finance system that isn't just utilized by the finance department, but by the entire organization. We want a system that will provide real-time financial information to all of our employees, all end users. Anybody can access it and run the reports that they need at that point in time. We also want to create a system that allows us to simplify and streamline our workflows and existing processes. And we plan to utilize electronic workflows that will hopefully help us transition away from all the paper that finance departments typically like to generate. So we anticipate that the work on this project will continue through 2021 with a go-live in early 2022. And the last project that I would like to highlight is one that I'm personally very excited about, and this is our transition to OpenGov for our budget development. So the OpenGov platform will allow us to finally move away from the Excel spreadsheets that the city has historically used to develop its budget. And it will allow us to use a system that will track and maintain budget entries through the various stages of the budget development process. So now, this information will be kept in this system. We'll be able to see when a number changes, so there will be no more mysteries when a number in an Excel worksheet changes. In addition to these internal enhancements to the budget process, the OpenGov platform will enable the city to produce an electronic interactive budget document rather than static PDF documents of the past. We believe that this new budget platform will make it easier for members of the public to access city financial information. So our goal is to utilize the OpenGov platform for the development of the fiscal year '21-'23 budget process, which will be kicking off just in a few months here, and have that, use that program for that entire process. So in closing, I would like to acknowledge there are some key people in the organization that have spent a lot of time, have gotten above and beyond to make all these projects that you've heard about tonight a reality. All the employees on this slide have not only taken initiative and played a lead role in the implementation of these systems. They have done this in addition to kind of continuing with their day-to-day responsibilities. So I'd like to first acknowledge the city clerk team, Stacy Leitner, Persephone Riley, and Kelly Thompson for their work on the OnBase Electronic Content Management System, as well as the Civic Clerk Council Agenda Management System. The EnterGov Land Management and Permitting System, this is a true cross-departmental effort with representatives from almost every department at the city. So led by Jessica Crone, Kelly Whitman in Planning, Wyatt Peters Solis in Building, Brittany Mariscal in Code Enforcement, Marilyn Phelps in Public Works, and Michelle McGay in Finance. And then finally, the Central Square Finance System. It's going to be a team effort consisting of all the members of the finance department team. And then lastly, I would like to again acknowledge David McCoy, our senior IT analyst, for all the support he has played in all of these projects and making them happen. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd all be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
All right. Questions, council members?
Well, I would just give feedback that it's, looks like you're making great progress on all these, so keep it up. Good job.
I think we found ourselves a couple of years ago with a great deal of work to do in these areas that we had stagnated a bit. Saved money, I suppose, but we're also less efficient as a result. So I'm really happy to see the progress we're making. And I'm happy that it'll impact our partners in particular, whether it's our citizens or the people who do business in Rancho Cordova. The fact that they get a better experience, more continuity, a quicker response hopefully through these changes is really important to us as we, you know, act as a good partner on our end of these transactions. All right. Anything else on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment. I think as pointed out by Ms. Duran and others, many of these technologies have been in place for the last 15 years, and they haven't really been updated. And in the world of technology, that's pretty much ancient. So the work that this team has been doing to upgrade our technologies and bring us to the 21st century is truly monumental. And I really would like to repeat what Ms. Duran also pointed out, that the teams that have been working on this are doing this in addition to all of their day-to-day responsibilities. And it's a tremendous amount of work. It's a tremendous amount of commitment. I have been watching and observing the work that David McCoy and his team have been doing, Kim and her team, and everybody else. Jessica's been doing a great work in upgrading our technologies, and it's truly monumental in scope and also noteworthy in the accomplishments that we've had so far. So I really want to take this chance to thank everybody. I know the city clerk's team, in the midsummer election, also went through two or three system upgrades. So this is truly a remarkable accomplishment, especially added the added burden of COVID-19 and with the way that we had to pivot and do our work differently with remote working. So it was almost a perfect storm, but this team has come through and really, I greatly appreciate their efforts.
Very good. Stacy, one comment for you or question for you. Is our new system going to be more Mac-friendly?
Specifically, the Agenda Management System?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we've had some issues with that before. Can't look it up on my phone or my, you know, iPad troubles sometimes. So that would be great.
Maybe I can talk with you offline, but it would be great if you could test that a little bit.
Okay.
And then give us some feedback. Yes.
All right. Any public comment on this item?
Not that I can see in the room or on Zoom or by phone.
All right. Very good. Thank you for the update. Much appreciated. Bob, did you have anything?
I'm looking forward to, maybe in 2021, we can start working back in the office and enjoy some of the new technology they put in. Right now, it's kind of hard to actually see, feel what's been accomplished. So I'm looking forward to be able to actually see that and see the people in the city will be able to find out how many better things are.
That would be great. All right. Very good. We are going to move on to our next agenda item, item number 13, which is council request for future agenda items. Anything going once, going twice?
I would just reiterate what I said earlier today, which was...
I'd like to bring up the planning commission again.
I agree.
But I just wanted to reiterate that I think at some point we need to have a discussion about reinstating a planning commission.
I'd like to bring the planning commission back.
I agree. That makes three.
There you go. All right. Let's get to work.
I actually think we discussed that earlier this year or at our retreats at the beginning of the year, and then COVID sort of happened. And I think that was a casualty, at least from my point of view. All right. If there is nothing else, I am going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Sue Wentz. She is the wife of Tom Wentz. Tom was a long-term resident of Rancho Cordova, tremendous guy. I think he was president of the Kiwanis Club, if I'm not mistaken. He was a Kiwanian as opposed to Rotarian, most of the leadership types always back there were one or the other, or maybe a chamber board member. But he was definitely a Kiwanian and did just a million and one things for Rancho Cordova. Worked with the community council, and it's impossible to list the full width and breadth of Tom's impact on our community. And his wife Sue was a very cheerful person, always upbeat, always had kind words for people, and was right there with him in the midst of all of those community activities. So they just recently relocated Arizona, and unfortunately, Sue passed away there. So we're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Sue Wentz.
David, let's also recognize her 20 or 25 years in the Air Force.
Sure. Oh, I should have mentioned that. Yeah, Tom got, he actually got to a rather elevated rank.
He did. Chief Master Sergeant or Senior Master Sergeant, something like that. It's all over his license plate.
I think that rank basically amounts to the highest ranking enlisted officer at Mather at one point, just to give you, just to give you an idea. He was quite a leadership, is quite a leadership guy. And they have spent the last, I don't know, Linda, 10 years traveling the west and the east and the entire country in RV, sort of RV caravans with other retired military. Remarkable lifestyle, being here a quarter of the time or something like that. But they will be missed. Sue will certainly be missed. And we wish Tom and their family the best. I think their family swelled to something like 25 members at this point, from their kids and grandkids and maybe great-grandkids by now, I'm not sure. But in any case, we're going to adjourn in memory of Sue Wentz. Thank you all. Our next meeting will be November the 10th. That is a special meeting and work session, so next week.
And I will not be, I'm landing later that night.
Okay. Have fun visiting your mom.
Thank you.
All right. See you all later. Thank you.
Thank you.